Let me switch the things.
Plus, you'll still live here.
Do you want to start the recording?
Ready? All right. Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Excused.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Excused. All right. We have no announcements, proclamations, or presentations this evening. We will move to appointments. We have Arts Commission appointments. City Council to approve the following appointments to the Arts Commission. All appointees will serve a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021. That's Kelly Gordon, Pat Judd, and Pam Smith. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption, pardon me, I move for the approval of the appointments for Kelly Gordon, Pat Judd, and Pam Smith.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the appointment to the Arts Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Salary Commission reappointment. City Council to confirm the reappointment of Isaiah Johnson to the Salary Commission for a four-year term to expire December 31, 2022. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
I move for the approval from the Council of the Salary Commission reappointment for a four-year term expiring December 31, 2022.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trump Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions? All those in favor of the Council, of the Salary Commission reappointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right. I believe we need, it's tonight, isn't it, that we need to do the consent agenda in front of the public hearings because if you'll notice on the consent agenda, there is confirm and ratify scheduling of the public hearing since Council was canceled for weather-related purposes two weeks ago. So, the consent agenda, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption of the Consent Agenda A through H.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Yes, this covers several minutes, current and past. The Claims Vouchers, which we will be having a financial report on, and Payroll Vouchers, which we'll also be having a report on. Confirming the public hearing, which will be coming forward, of the franchise agreement with T-Mobile West LLC. Public Works Project covering the citywide ADA and sidewalk improvements project, and the award is going to Transportation Systems, Inc., and also covering Brandon Park Baseball Synthetic Turf.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right. Now, we will move to public hearings. Public hearing for renewal of franchise agreement number 13-37. City Council to conduct a public hearing to receive public comment in consideration of renewal of franchise agreement number 1337 for T-Mobile West LLC. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, Your Honor. Amber Price will be giving a presentation since we could not do that at a study session.
Good evening, Amber.
Good evening, Mayor Backus and Councilmembers. I'm Amber Price, Right-Away Specialist with the Public Works Department. Franchise Agreement Number 1337 for T-Mobile West LLC is for wireless telecommunications facilities that are currently located in the city's rights-of-way on the West Hill and Lee Hill. The location of the facilities is shown on page 32 of 183 of your agenda packet. Both facilities on the West Hill were originally installed under a right-of-way use permit with King County prior to the area being annexed into the city. T-Mobile obtained a franchise agreement number 1337 under Ordinance Number 6491 with Auburn in 2014. They amended this ordinance in 2016 under Ordinance Number 6575 to add the facilities on Lee Hill. The existing agreement is set to expire on March 6, 2019, and T-Mobile has applied for a five-year renewal for the terms of their existing agreement. At this time, the city is not aware of any plans for T-Mobile to add any additional locations under this franchise. It is written, as it's written, this would require an amendment to the existing franchise to add additional locations. The existing agreement requires T-Mobile to comply with city code and obtain construction permits so that they can make repairs, upgrades, or improvements to their existing facilities. And all improvements are reviewed and managed through the city's permitting processes that are a requirement of the agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for Amber? Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
All right. I will open the public hearing. If there is anyone that would like to speak to the renewal of the franchise agreement with T-Mobile West, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the franchise?
I guess this is the time, huh? I can't quite hear what's said on this.
This is for the franchise agreement.
Pardon me?
This is a public hearing on the franchise agreement for T-Mobile.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the franchise agreement? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will move to audience participation. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
My name's Bob Zimmerman, B3029, 46th Place South. I'm bringing up the same old issue that we can't get proper code enforcement here, and I'm quite appalled that the Council won't even support compliance with state law. You know, you would think that would be just a unanimous consent, and we can't even get a more majority to agree to it, you know? And it's just kind of beyond my comprehension. These guys tell, say that these code violations are civil matters. There's no civil enforcement for code. These are things that the city or the authority having jurisdiction are supposed to take care of, and it's not because something is a critical situation. The purpose of the code is to prevent simple things, every man-made structure and process in the world is subject to failure, and most of them are relatively benign if they are operating properly. And when they fail, the purpose of the code is to prevent those situations from becoming catastrophes. Now, we need to get some people in this city that can understand those simple concepts. You know, I can give you an example of a code violation right out here on the west side of town about 30 years ago. Got a call, "Go check out this house because kids are getting shocked in the bathtub." Okay? The parents didn't believe the kids, but they finally decided they better check that out. So, I went over there, and they had a plumbing burst in the attic, an old knob and two square. Got the wall wet, and there's a guy there, contractor there, drying it up to do the repair, but the wall's still wet. And those kids were getting about 50 volts in that bathtub. They're lucky they didn't die in that bathtub. What was the bottom line? Illegal plumbing repair. Okay? Why should that guy that did that illegal plumbing repair put those kids' lives at risk? That's the kind of stupid things that people do out there that don't know what the heck they're doing. Okay? It just goes on and on and on. Another one I was called to was a boiler installation, or when they first started doing energy management. The guy that wrote the program for this boiler made a mistake, and when he turned it on, it didn't turn off. And I run into quite a few situations where people made programming errors like that. But anyway, the engineers designed to interface the new equipment bypassed the high-temperature cutout in the boiler. And the janitor happened to notice that the high-pressure cutout on the piping was blowing off, and he had enough sense to shut the boiler off. That boiler was in a school full of kids. Now, I don't know if that high-temperature, high-pressure cutout has enough capacity to keep up with the boiler going full blast or not. They don't blow up very often, but when they do, it's catastrophic. Anyway, my time's up, and I would hope that you would get people that understand these basic concepts of code, which start enforcing the code as prescribed in state law. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone like to speak during public comment? All right. We will move on to Council Ad-Hoc Committee Reports. Council Ad-Hoc Committee Chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council if any. Currently, we have one ad hoc committee that is Finance, and Councilmember Holman, oh, Councilmember DeCoursey, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Wales and I reviewed the Claims Vouchers that are shown in tonight's agenda for February 4, and they were in the amount of approximately $3 million. And Claims Vouchers also dated February 19 in the amount of $3.6 million. We found the Claims Vouchers to be all in order and had no questions for staff. We also reviewed the payroll vouchers for the period from January 17 through January 30, 2019, in the amount of $2.525 million. And payroll vouchers for the period from February 1 to February 13, 2019, in the amount of $2.35, $2.325 million. And we recommend an approval by Council, which did take place tonight in the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We will move to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 6711, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, establishing the local sales and use tax rate for local revitalization financing for 2019.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
Yes, I move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 6711.
Councilmember Holman, can you take a look at the recommended action on your sheet? This is an ordinance that would typically need to come to a study session first, but because of the timing and the fact that Council meetings.
My apologies. I'd like to change that. My motion is to waive Council rules and adopt Ordinance 6711.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you. And before I give it back to you, Mr., or Councilmember Holman, that is because with the cancellation of a study session, where typically any ordinances per Council rules and procedures would come to a study session for discussion, because this is critical timing, we are asking that those rules be waived for you to consider this item this evening. Councilmember Holman.
You said it all.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 6711, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Moving on to resolutions. Resolution Number 5403, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the transfer of funds for the purpose of making a loan or loans from the Sewer Fund, Fund Number 431, and/or the Storm Drainage Fund, Fund Number 432, to the Water Fund, Fund Number 430, for up to a five-year period of time.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
Yes, I move for the, to adopt Resolution Number 5403.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Trump Manuel.
I'll second. I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
This is an in-house loan. We'll never get money cheaper than we get from ourselves, and takes care of utilities.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution Number 5403, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution Number 5406, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Auburn and Seattle-King County Department of Public Health to implement the 2019-2020 Local Hazardous Waste Management Program, accepting program grant funds.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 5406.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
This, we receive a grant of $55,000 from King County to provide hazardous waste education to residents and students this year and next. There you go.
Thank you. Questions or comments from Council? Councilmember Trump Manuel.
I just have a question. It says here that it's going to educate the students. From what level? Is it all levels that they're going to be going and educating about hazards?
Elementary school.
Just the elementary?
Elementary school.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan. Other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5406, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution Number 5407, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Auburn and King County to implement the 2019-2020 Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant Program and accepting program grant funds.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 5407.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
This is receiving grant money from King County for waste reduction and recycling in the tune of $75,000. The city will promote waste reduction and recycling to businesses, residents, and schools.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution Number 5407, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution Number 5408, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the cities of Auburn, Burien, Covington, Des Moines, Federal Way, Kent, Normandy Park, Renton, Tuailla, and King County for the creation and operation of the South King Housing and Homeless Partners.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 5408.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trump Manuel.
I... I do.
You second that?
I second.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I have something covered, so I apologize.
That's all right. Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. As Attorney Groves said, that the, this is to allow the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement. This process was a culmination of a three-year piloting collaboration on housing and homelessness between the six cities in South King County. Auburn participated in every one of those meetings we had. I joined the mayor at a few of those meetings, and the meetings were headed up by the Housing Development Consortium who made presentations to us. And at the end of the process, we agreed that it was to the benefit of all cities to develop this interlocal agreement for the South King County Housing and Homeless Partners with the acronym of SKEP. So, I'm very proud that we have been able to participate in this and to continue to keep this going and to meet the needs who are in most need. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will tell you that I also mentioned this, the Pierce County mayors, because we are a two-county city, the Pierce County mayors recently got together to discuss homelessness and affordable housing, and so I was able to share with them SKEP, and there is interest in Pierce County in forming something similar. So, stay tuned. There might be more to come on that. All right. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution Number 5408, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right. We will move to Mayor and Councilmember Reports. At this time, the mayor and City Council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations, and we will begin with Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I was able to attend a huge sound Regional Council presentation today on Vision 2050, 2050. And you know, the more, the more we all get involved with local government, state government, county government, it takes a long time to do planning. Well, this is one that's, that takes a long planning period. They started tracking for the 2050 Vision in 2017, and they're looking at eight million more people in this period. There'll be more device. There'll be 3.4 million more jobs dealing with climate change and regional growth and its effect on the environment, i.e. carbon emissions, housing requirements. And they're looking at putting out a draft of what they have studied thus far by the end of April of this year. And if anyone wants to write this down, I'll give you the website, and you can follow it if you're so interested. It would be www.psc.org/...
Excellent.
And also, they talked, another presentation by WashDot was SR410 study that's underway. And the community outreach, this was kind of interesting. They, rather than having an open house, they did an online outreach. And normally, on an open house, they'll get 20, 25 people, as we do too. We have our open houses. Some are larger, but most of them are in that ratio. They did it online, and they engaged 2,800 responses for their study. So, that's significant. That's, and so, they're gonna, they're gonna do online again, and I think that that's pretty cool information for us even. And, and that's gonna be it, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Deputy Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Holman.
No report.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
No report.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Well, since I get 20 minutes.
You must think that you're Councilmember Pelosi.
He taught me well. Now, due to our weather conditions and other things going on, all of us kind of had some short sessions of what we all did. But on last Tuesday, February 12, we were supposed to have our AWC Association of Washington City's Board Meeting in Olympia, and of course, we did not have it in Olympia, so we had that done remotely. And we have board members from all over the state who actually attend that, and doing it remotely, we had a 100% participation of all board members, and it was kind of interesting doing a meeting over your computer. We've done that a few times, but this one happened to be a little over four hours long, so it was quite a session. The majority of our time, about half our time, was spent looking at the legislative priorities of AWC and how that impacts cities, and looking at the various bills that are being presented in the legislature of this session. There's almost 2,000 bills that have been introduced into the legislature this session, which is a staggering number. The session is 105 days long, and the cutoff period for these bills reaching their various committees and before it goes to the floor is the middle of next month. So, they also have a very short time to do what they have to do. And April 17 is the last day to pass bills, except those that are budget-related. So, there's a lot of work to be done in this, and as we go through the process of looking at how this takes place, it goes to a House Committee, then it goes to the Rules Committee, then it finally hits the floor on the Senate side, it goes from committee to rules to the floor, and you either get concurrence or non-concurrence, and finally onto the governor, and finally, it becomes law. How many of those nearly 2,000 bills will survive is anybody's guess. We have some high stakes in some of the things that are happening on the housing and homeless side and affordable housing side, as well as other issues that impact our city, but it's, it's gonna be quite an interesting process, see how it unfolds. And also, for Council here, we pass these. Now, you have one for, one for, this is one of the slides we had, and I'll just show it, I don't have a copy for everybody, one of the slides we had at our, at our board meeting, and this is the Office of Financial Management for the state looking at their budget shortfall. And the revenue forecast for the state is approximately $50.2 billion. And this chart shows that the 2017-19 budget is at $44.6 billion. The area of compensation, caseload, and other takes up another $2.4 billion. The K2, carry-forward and maintenance level cost for education is about $4.1 billion, and that's not fully funded. So, there's a cutoff line here that shows the shortfall of funding when it comes in the educational level, which is still, McCleary's still not fixed. And then beyond that, there's other needs that take place, including collective bargaining agreements, behavioral health, K-12 new enhancements, higher education, early learning, various other policies, and other unfunded requests, all that remain unfunded. So, the state is continuously in their own dilemma right now, looking at how they're going to provide sufficient revenue... going to provide sufficient revenues to meet the needs of just the basics for the state. So I can stay, stay tuned. We'll see what happens in the session before the end of April, and hopefully, some good things will happen, but it's still gonna be a huge challenge as we go forward on the state level. Thank you.
And Councilmember De Corsi, as well as all council members, I know you agree with me that anytime there is revenue sharing at the state level down to the city level, that unfortunately is one of the first places they look to balance their own budgets, and that removes funding from the municipalities, but at the same time, they will give us another opportunity to add another tax or a way to share or collect revenue from the citizens. So it is of the utmost importance that we ensure that the revenue sharing does not go away, because we don't need another way to tax our residents, we just need to have the fair share of what's already being taxed in those cases. Councilmember Baggett?
Thank you, Your Honor. February sixth, I attended the Tacoma Pierce County Board of Health meeting, and they were approving funding for a methadone treatment clinic there in Pierce County, and they were not aware that there were any other clinics of such a nature being established anywhere close to Tacoma, Pierce County. I presented a package of information that we received from the We Care organization, who is a collaborative partner with the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, and they are putting a clinic here in Auburn for methadone treatment and treatment of other opioid type of illnesses where they are addictions and what have you. And it's basically a three-stage program, and they were very enlightened about finding out that they had some other source over here that they could call upon to use and maybe pattern some of their treatment procedures after this one. This is gonna be located down off of Auburn Way here, and not too many people know about it, but I think it's a good thing for our community, and the We Care organization and the Muckleshoots are in the process of enlightening and educating the neighborhoods that are around where this clinic will be established. They're currently going through the tenant improvement process right now, and should be in operation here perhaps within the next four to five months. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will not go over meetings that I have been at for the last few weeks, but I wanted to give my public appreciation to the employees of the city of Auburn for the recent weather event. It was roughly two weeks in length. We didn't have snow, fortunately, that entire amount of time, but from the time when the weather reports and the briefings were taking place and the time that the event actually occurred and all of the, the work that had to be done by so many in our city, I just wanted to say a big thank you to everyone that was involved. We had on Friday at noon on February eighth, I made the decision to close City Hall so that our team members who were not considered as essential personnel would have an opportunity to get home prior to the weather event hitting, because I'm sure everybody saw on the news the three, four, or five-hour commutes for some individuals who did not have that option. And then we remained closed for the full day on Monday, February eleventh. During that time, we had Auburn Police Department, we had the Parks Maintenance and Operations Crew, and we had the Public Works Maintenance and Operation Crew working around the clock. The Maintenance and Operations Crews were on twelve-hour shifts, they were out clearing streets. We have the primary routes that are cleared, the secondary routes that are cleared, and then if there's an opportunity, they will go out and clear some of the neighborhood streets. There has never been a promise or an expectation that every road in this city would be plowed. That's just not possible. But I will tell you, I took the opportunity to ride with one of the crews up in Lakeland on Saturday of, of the snow, and it is nothing short of fascinating to be in one of those rigs, to see the work that they do, and it was also very heartwarming to see people who were walking bundled up, up in Lakeland, turn around and wave and say thank you, because they knew that their roads were being taken care of. We had crews out all over the city at, like I say, twenty-four hours a day. We also had mechanics, the maintenance, taking place on some of those rigs, because, believe it or not, some of those rigs are gonna have mechanical problems during constant use. The governor had declared a state of emergency, but our team, I will tell you, did a phenomenal job, and I am so very proud of everyone that, that was involved, all of the directors, the emergency management. We were on the phone, we were listening in on the briefings. You and your teams deserve a world of thanks, and we have received numerous emails, Facebook posts, phone calls for people saying that Auburn had the best streets and the best response to this situation. Now, we're never going to make everybody happy in that case, but I do believe that we, the city of Auburn, did a phenomenal job in response to this latest weather event, and I thank you all for your part that you played in at council as well. Mr. City Attorney, yes. Mr. City Attorney, do we have any need for an executive or closed session this evening? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.